To where?
To the, uh, Flyer House Underground Sixth and.
Oh, yeah. I don't have anything.
And so she dropped me off in the parking lot here and I just, I said, and I had to get out of the paper, I said, now, Kate, you go down Main all the way to Fourteenth. Anyway, so, she's just starting to drive, so she was really confused and nervous about getting there.
Kenny was behind me thinking. And the lights are all timed so well. What's your phone number? I mean, they are just timed, that's okay. It's like, really, do we not think about timing the lights when we tear up? I'm like, I think that'd be a crazy fix.
Think you need to go into the.
It just happens to be crazy every single.
Sounds like he should go to the Whiskin Shop on Saturday.
Let's just do that.
Believe me, he would not want me to show him. He's a shy.
I thought I was gonna be starting.
We would've shown everything now.
Okay, I missed.
I have same problem.
Okay, thank you. Can we have one kind of first? I got pulled off the dock now, we know early.
Oops.
The Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month. Any recommendations made on rezone requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments, tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and planning commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Once the consent agenda has been approved, those agenda items have been approved and members of the public are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward, make a statement, or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anybody addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening. The first item of business tonight is to consider the consent agenda, and I will read those items. Number one is the approval of the August 4th, 2010 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two are Platts. Item three, number 2010-07-11, is a preliminary subdivision plan in the RS2 Residential District to develop 54 single-family residential lots at the southeast corner of South Line Drive Avenue and East 49th Street. Item number four, number 2010-707-12, is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales at 1400 North Minnesota Avenue. Item five, number 2010-07-13, is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow replacement of an off-premise sign at 701 East 41st Street. Item six, number 2010-08-03, is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 2014 South Phillips. Item seven, number 2010-08-04, is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow a full-service restaurant within 100 feet of a residential use at 334 South Phillips Avenue. Item eight, number 2010-08-05, is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to develop a site greater than an acre for a fast-food restaurant at 3601 South Minnesota Avenue. Item nine, number 2010-08-06, is a conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow a full-service restaurant within 100 foot of a residential use at 1231 East 57th Street. Item 10, number 2010-08-0, or 10, excuse me, conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow an auto service and repair shop at the southeast corner of West 12th Street and South Marion Road. Item 11, number 2010-07-06, is a final development plan in Subarea A of the Platinum Valley Plan Development District to construct a convenience store with gas pumps, bank, restaurant at the northwest corner of West 74th Street and South Louise Avenue. Item 12, number 2010-08-02, is a final development plan in Subarea A, Rolling Heights Plan Development District to construct a dental clinic at West 69th Street and South Western Avenue. Are there any planning commissioners that would like to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Okay, Steve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my name is Steve Randall, uh, with the planning, uh, staff here this evening. And staff has been notified, uh, that testimony wishes to be given on item six, so we're requesting that be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to have an item that's now a part of the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda? Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with item six moved to the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to, uh, recommend approval of the consent agenda except for item six when we get to the regular agenda.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda is approved, so if your item was one of those approved, and so that would be items one through 12 excluding number six, uh, you're free to go home. Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the regular agenda, and I believe that has to be done with item six included. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the revised regular agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. The regular agenda is approved, the first item on the regular agenda tonight is item six, staff report.
Good evening, Steve Randall with the planning staff. Item six is for Graham On Sale Alcohol Establishment, uh, David Graham and, of the Graham Organization is the applicant. Tom Munster is the owner, uh, on Phillips Avenue of 214 South Phillips Avenue. Property is located in the downtown business district, C3 zoning. Uh, we have a compatibility rating of five with the adjacent land uses, which means it's compatible with those uses in that district. The conditional use permit standard is indicated in your staff report for on-sale alcohol as, um, items one will not create an undue concentration of similar uses, two, it's not in an area where unattended children could be expected to frequent, patronize, or recreate, three, it's compatible with the characteristics of surrounding uses and not injurious to surrounding properties, and four, that video lottery machine placement is not within 2,000 feet of any city park or other video lottery machine placement or any elementary or secondary school within the city. Property is located mid-block between East 10th and East 11th on the east side of South Phillips, and it's also in between, uh, South Mall Avenue and South Phillips Avenue. The building goes through the property, it's a narrow site, a site plan has been indicated, which is the floor plan. It's on the screen, it'd be in front of you. Floor plan indicates two levels, one's a mezzanine level over a kitchen, and the main level would be the entrance from Phillips Avenue. Seating capacity of 103 is indicated on the plan. The applicant has been made aware that a seating capacity more than 100 may require, uh, code compliance requirements be met, uh, for fire. The project is described as a casual dining bar and restaurant serving sandwiches, entrees, and desserts. Times of operation are tentatively set at 11:00 to 10:00 Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 to 2:00 Friday and Saturday. Live entertainment will be offered on weekends with music tending towards easy listening. The outside of the building will remain similar in its current appearance, and they will add a coat of paint in the same shade and also their own signage to the outside. Staff finds that this location does not create an undue concentration of similar uses. There are 16 establishments on sale in the general vicinity of the project, that would be 600 feet, but there are only three similar establishments on sale alcohol, primary use, uh, one, or excuse me, these, this one and Lucky's on the same block would be, uh, the closest it would be. Copper Lounge is across, uh, excuse me, Stogies is across the street and Copper Lounge is down the street a block. It's not in an area where unattended children could be expected to frequent. Uh, public parks are nearby, but they're urban scale and primarily accessible, uh, by pedestrian activity, normal business activity in the downtown area, or by, uh, car or vehicle. The applicant is proposing that the new business will be compatible and has, uh, indicated that they would, uh, discuss the project with neighbors and with the Main Street Organization Downtown, and is prepared to report on that this evening. The applicant has not proposed any video lottery in the establishment. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the two standard stipulations, one being a security management plan be approved, uh, by the Sioux Falls Police Department, and number two, that the approval is for this applicant only, and that would be to reserve, uh, conditional use permits in the future to different applicants. As I indicated, we did receive calls indicating that, uh, people would like to give testimony at this evening's meeting, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, um, they're asking for, uh, hours of operation until 2:00 AM Friday and Saturday. Do you know what the hours are for Stogies, Lucky's, and, um, Copper Lounge, are they similar to that?
That's correct.
And then one other question, is there a plan for patio?
Uh, they have a plan that's on file from a previous use, uh, for sidewalk seating. They did not provide that along with this application, and I don't know if they're going to use that or not, uh, that would be a good question for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Hello, David Graham, 2301 East Castle Rock Place.
David, is there anything that you'd like to add to the staff report?
Uh, Steve did a very good job, uh, on the report. Uh, you know, I do want to address that we'll be an upscale pub with food, uh, we'll be open for the lunch hours to try to entertain the business crowd, uh, give you guys another option downtown, uh, during the evenings. Uh, I'm familiar with the noise ordinance, familiar with what we can and can't do, we will definitely abide by that, I have a copy here, I've studied it. Um, uh, we do have some people, uh, with us tonight that would like to, uh, talk and support the issue, uh, if there are any complaints, you know, I'd like to address them, and, uh, you know, I'll give my cellphone number to whoever wants to talk.
Okay.
In regard to the sidewalk, uh, you know, there is a bump out on file, uh, with the city now, I, we'll put an application in, and, uh, you know, we'd like to utilize that if possible.
Okay. Any questions for David? Thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number six?
Rochelle Scop, 310 North Duluth, Sioux Falls. I am a business owner in the property just one down from a property already owned by Mr. Graham in a 3,000 block of Russ, West Russell, and I am speaking against approval of the conditional use permit for 214 South Phillips. While my remarks don't directly address the four standards of Appendix B Chapter 15.59306, I believe they will provide important information and should be given consideration. I direct you to 15.59.100, conditional use standards, it says, "These standards shall be construed as the minimum requirements for any specific conditional use." And also at the beginning of the conditional use permits chapter, it talks about that ensuring compliance with the comprehensive plan and protect the health, safety, and general welfare in the issuance of such conditional use permit. Mr. Graham owns The Oaks, and it is an example of his performance or non-performance as a property owner. We are one property down from him. Over the past two years, that property has broken almost every ordinance and code that there is, and they've racked up hundreds of dollars in citations, many of which remain unpaid, and also failure to maintain, mow the property, failure to secure and maintain the safety of the building, failure to respond to concerns and calls of joining property owners and property neighbors within his area. Citations as early as August 2008 and as recently as June 4th, 2010 remain unpaid. The city owed several hundred dollars in citations and several thousand dollars in mowing, maintenance, and securing the structure when he refused to do so. While I understand that the economic downturn may have put some plans on hold, basic maintenance, maintenance, and security still should have occurred, and it proves quite simply that his failure to return calls, communicate with property owners, as well as comply and work with the city ordinances, go beyond economics. Quite simply, Mr. Graham is not a good neighbor. If his economics has changed so that he is able to pursue the 214 South Phillips project, then he should first be held to the commitment of the asbestos abatement, the demolition of his Russell Street property, The Oaks, as well as the money owed to the city for the citations and the maintenance. After the press conference held in late June, Mr. Graham confirmed to me and several others standing by that this was regarding The Oaks, this was a press conference with the mayor, that it seemed that there was no contract with any hotel or resort franchise that was secured, nor was there any actual funding secured, loan approval, or financing for construction. In fact, we could not even get confirmation if there is sufficient funds for the approval, sufficient funds approval or financing for even the asbestos abatement or the demolition of The Oaks. As his neighbors, we have suffered through the blight of a continuing deteriorating appearance while we struggle and spend money to maintain the property, the appearance of our properties. We have an increase in vandalism theft on our properties, our adjacent properties, and an increased occurrences of vagrancy. I am an ardent supporter of downtown and a vibrant downtown, I'm a resident of the Cathedral District who loves walking downtown, I do majority of my shopping and my leisure time and socializing downtown. I also understand that as a small, as a small business owner, Mr. Munster needs to secure a tenant, and I sympathize with him and feel badly that a denial of this permit will impact that. However, I must ask that you deny Mr. Graham's conditional use permit request. Downtown Sioux Falls does not need the type of a neighbor that Mr. Graham has shown himself to be at the Russell, to the Russell Street property owners. And I believe he should be directed to uphold and fulfill his obligations of more than two years in that area prior to his even ever being considered for anything else anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you, before you step down, is your first name Rochelle?
Rochelle, R-A-C-H-E-L-L-E.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rochelle? And I take it, uh, you're a neighbor not to the property that's identified in item six downtown, but you're a neighbor to the property on Russell?
Correct, and I feel that his, our experience there should be considered when considering that he will become a neighbor of the downtown community.
Okay.
As I said when I started, I'm not directing my remarks specifically to the four standards that he's being asked to adhere to for the Phillips Avenue property, but I believe the experience and his record with the city and his failure to, you know, comply and, and he is in arrears on citations on other properties should be considered when considering placing him in the downtown area.
Yeah, ordinarily, our focus would be land use issues and not necessarily, uh, related to associated properties, but, uh, unless there are some more questions for Rochelle, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item number six?
Good evening, I'm Grant Howman, 1510 South Phillips Avenue. Uh, my partners and I are also stakeholders in the downtown area. I have a property at 200 South Phillips where Colade's is and Howman Insurance is, we have properties at 314, 316, 318, 300 South Main. We're in the process of refurbishing the old Chevy dealership building across from the pavilion. Um, very adamant supporters of the downtown, um, have seen, we've been involved with the downtown since 1998, and, uh, part of the vision was always to get these upscale pubs and create a downtown that is more of a destination-type entertainment venue with retail, living, all of it. And, you know, the final, final piece is probably going to be more of the residential, but you gotta have the entertainment venue, and, and evaluating the plans that Mr. Graham has put forward, um, I think it, it, it hits the nail on all the heads. Um, it's exactly what, uh, my group likes to see. Some of the venues that we're entertaining in regards to commercial tenants for the, uh, old Chevy dealership building, for lack of a better word, uh, this is what they look for. We've got an outfit out of New York right now that the reason they're looking at downtown is because of places like Stogies and Minerva's and those type of establishments where when they fly in, there's entertainment, they want to have their offices down here, and they want to have entertainment down here, and there's hotels down here. And I think this, uh, is really what we're looking for to continually to grow the downtown. Um, I, I've gone through all the plans, I've spoken with Mr. Graham on countless occasions, and he's, uh, satisfactory, uh, answered all of my questions. So, do anybody have any questions for me at all?
Thank you, Grant. Any questions for Grant?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address item number six? Okay. Would you like to come up?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Rachel Munster, I reside at 222 South Phillips Avenue. Uh, my husband, Tom, and I own 214, 220, 222, 224, and 226, um, South Avenue, South Phillips Avenue, excuse me. And, um, we support the project proposed by Mr. Graham for 214 South Phillips. Uh, we believe it'll improve, uh, property values, create additional pedestrian traffic downtown, and add to the atmosphere that makes downtown a great place to, uh, live, work, and play. So, we fully support Mr. Graham.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, before you step down, Rachel? Any questions for Rachel? I guess we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's one other person that would like to come up and address item number six and has something different and relevant, we'd take one more. Okay, thank you. Commission action.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to visit with Steve one more time, please?
Steve?
Steve, in, in granting a conditional use permit, what's the timeframe that typically applies to those as far as a project getting started and being completed?
From the effective date of the approval, they have one year to make, uh, initial, uh, progress on the project.
With conditional use permits, uh, are they then, uh, relooked at? As far as to see that they're adhering to the conditional use permit granted?
Yes, we have a, a conditional use permit monitoring program that each year we go through and look at the preview. through and look at the previous year's conditional use permits approved, the conditions by which they were approved, to see if they have met those conditions, and if not, why not?
Thank you, Steve.
We could certainly use a motion for the sake of discussion.
Well, I'd move for approval of Item Number 6.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Is that with the two stipulations?
With the two stipulations.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I want to address a little bit what you did earlier, Meredith, is that our role here is to look at land use, and that's what this board does. And does the zoning for this particular property fit the land use? So that's what we're here for. I so appreciate you, Rochelle, coming forward and sharing your concerns with us because obviously those are concerns, but they don't address this particular property. We need to focus on, like I say, land use issues, but I know that this is your opportunity to be heard, and I appreciate you taking the time to come down here and articulate your concerns, because that's a neighborhood as well that needs to be heard from. So, having said that, we're talking about the property on Phillips Avenue, whether it fits the land use or not, and I believe that it does.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to agree with Jessie on her comments. Rochelle, I appreciate your being- sitting up and having your chance to be heard, but I hope you can understand that what Jessie just explained. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the conditional use approval of Item Number 6, signified by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item Number 6 has been approved. I think Steve, David, we're now on 13. Yeah, Item Number 13.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is David Lovin, and I will be representing the planning staff on this and later items. Item Number 13 is Petition Number 2010-07-18, a rezone from the RD Residential District to the C2 General Commercial District for allowed uses. The applicant has operated an auto repair shop at this location and is requesting to re- the rezoning to become a conforming use. The general location of the site is at 704 South Cleveland Avenue, an area of about .15 acres in size, and as I noted, the existing land use was auto service and repair. Now, on your compatibility chart, you'll notice that the compatibility is rated R3 in all directions from the site, and that is because of the small nature of the site itself and that it has been in existing use for several decades at this point against the residential neighbors. The proposed regulations and standards, the C2 General Commercial District typically requires the following: a front yard setback of 10 feet, side yard of 10 feet, rear yard of 20, and a maximum height of 45 feet. As I noted, this location is at 704 South Cleveland. The accessibility, a driveway exists from the property onto Cleveland Avenue. No parks, open space, or schools are located within 600 feet, and the character of the site is flat and developed. Now typically, a general commercial district such as the C2 would not be a desirable zoning district when surrounded by residential zoning and land uses. In this case, however, the site has functioned as a motor vehicle service and repair since the 1970s, and the applicant is requesting the zoning to match the land use status. The size of the site is less than one-fifth of an acre in size, and it has a frontage of less than 52 feet. Because of the limited size of the site, potential redevelopment and those accompanying impacts are limited and would not further impact the existing adjacent residential over current site impacts. The subject property and the commercial land use existed prior to the current zoning ordinance. Properties that were rendered nonconforming by the zoning ordinance at the time of its adoption in 1983 have been allowed to rezone their property in order to reflect the use. Because the parcel is along a major collector, commercial land uses have operated historically, and commercial zoning includes some limited neighborhood compatible land uses, and the neighborhood will have the opportunity to comment at the public hearings regarding this application. We are not opposed to the rezoning application. I- our office has received some phone calls from members of the audience, and they will be free to speak about their concerns. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Kenny?
Mr. Chair. David, good evening, David.
Good evening.
Could you explain to everybody the zoning code change that took place in 1983?
Well, I think what it was at the time was an overall comprehensive rezoning of the city that both zoned properties to what they were and zoned them to what they were expected to become at the time, and a number of properties at that time had been rendered nonconforming. You've seen those in the past where you'll get a conditional use permit application for expansion of a nonconforming use along such streets as West 12th Street, you know, and then some of the side streets off of there where they've been zoned to C2 but have remained as a residential.
So, the theory has been that if there was a car repair shop there in 1983, it could continue on forever? Or let's say the car shop wanted to do something different?
Well, right now, it's a legal, what we call a legal nonconforming use, and they- that basically means that the operation of the site is legal according to city zoning ordinance, even though the zoning ordinance doesn't- isn't in line with the use. And if they were to do any sort of expansion or alteration, they would need to come back to you for a conditional use permit. In this case, however, they're regulated by the residential- RD Residential Zoning District regulations, and so if the rezoning were approved, then they would be regulated by the commercial uses on a commercial type of property, and so that's one of the reasons why this has been brought forward to you.
Wouldn't it be easier to come bring this in as a conditional use permit versus complete rezon?
Well, the rezoning is just a simple reflection of the use, and that's what the applicant has requested.
And let's say the use stopped. Let's say it was no longer a car repair shop. What is the rule on not being used as something before it loses that grandfather?
One year.
One year?
One year.
So, in other words, it's been a car repair shop prior to 1983?
Yep.
It's been a car repair shop up until?
I believe it's just been within the last year, this year, that- in fact, it may still be operating, Jeff. Yeah.
And then I just- I drove by the site, and I see the properties for sale. I did a little more investigation, I see it's vacant, which makes- kind of leads me to believe that I'm not sure if it's currently being used, and the owner can help clear that up for me. But if a use stops for one year, then it goes back to the zoning on the property, which is multifamily, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. Well, RD, yep.
RD. C2, and I just say this, it sits right in the middle of the block. It appears to me there's residential on both sides of it, on each side. By putting a C2 zoning on it, do we not open the door for whatever C2 might or might not allow down the road?
Well, I think one of the- and one of the notes that we made in the staff report is because of the limited size of the site, there is not much potential for redevelopment into other uses other than what is existing currently. And so by zoning it to the C2 district, we actually have the regulations of the district in place governing that type of use, and so that's where we're at with the staff report.
David, I appreciate that. I just- I want everybody to kind of understand how this works a little bit. I appreciate the comments.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David. That's right, you are the petitioner, aren't you?
Yes, I am. Jeff Schmidt, I'm the applicant on this project. As you can see by this aerial, it represents the project very well. There's a single-family house to the south and a single-family house to the north. This property actually has a business on it. Whether or not it's operating right now, I can't speak to that. In the back, it's a repair garage. Majority of the site is in concrete, and in the front, to the west, is where there is a customer service office located on it. This land is zoned RD, which is not necessarily single-family, but it's for twin homes, town homes, as we see it today in the city of Sioux Falls. I posted the signs on this property to rezon it to C2 Commercial, and I put- I gave the letter to the property owner to the north and the east and posted it to the- directly to the north on the property. Did not do it to the south because they had dogs, and the dogs chased me, so I apologize for that.
You're pretty fast.
But the owners, the owners own the property to the south, so I figured they knew about the property. It is a very challenging site. It's probably the site that we're rezoning is not going to be used residential, and so that's why we brought forward a request to zone it to C2 Commercial.
Any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair. Jeff, your property line, it looks like the garage back there is a continuation of a garage that goes into the adjacent property owners.
That's correct. Those two-
They're not asking for a rezon, or this would not include that property to the south?
The owners own both properties, and the property to the south is a single-family house with a single-family garage on it, and if they rezoned the property to the south, if I rezoned the property to the south, you would have a single-family house on a commercial property, and most people understand that that's very difficult to get loans for because you can't get a bank loan for residential property and a commercial. Similar to how staff represented the property to the north, getting commercial property on a residential, residency zone property. So, we're trying to clean up some of those discrepancies.
So, Jeff, is there an easement then for this- coming an easement for this building site?
Not on the flats.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair. Jeff, why are you the petitioner on this one? Do you drive around and look for properties? I'm curious.
I'm the applicant.
Oh, the applicant.
Is there a petitioner here tonight?
No, I'm the petitioner.
And the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? He's apparently not answering that question. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to address Item Number 13?
My name is Karen Kennedy. I live at 717 South Cleveland Avenue. I have lived in the neighborhood for over 10 years. I love my neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. The property being questioned has been up for sale for quite a while. I don't believe that building has been in business for quite some time. From my understanding, it's been an extension of a car lot, and all I've ever seen happen is cars, occasional couple cars parked out in front of the business for sale. You know, I've never seen anyone there at a continuous basis. You know, I don't believe there's hours of operation. You know, to me, it was just a building, an extra building on someone's lot. I have small children. I'm not really looking for a business to come in my neighborhood. We live on a two-lane street with parking on both sides. You know, it's a fairly- you know, we got a little bit of traffic. I mean, there's- I don't have room for more traffic, you know? I'm concerned about what would move in. I don't know what type of business would move in. That's a very big cause for concern. It's a safety issue for my children. There's a lot of kids that live in that neighborhood. I don't want to devalue my property either. That's important to me. I plan on staying there. You know, it's a very safe neighborhood. I love my neighbors, so. You know, the biggest concern is the unknown. I don't know what it's going to be. So, there's several neighbors here with me tonight. Everyone I've spoken to is opposed to the rezoning. I don't know if anyone else is going to speak, but that's pretty much all I got. Thank you.
Any questions for Karen?
Karen, I'm looking at this map, plot map, and it looks like just a block to the north of you, on the north side of the street, there's- I'm familiar with Cleveland Avenue. There's a fair number of commercial businesses smattered within Cleveland Avenue. So, really, just a block further north of you, there is the former Asom Drug and the liquor store, and I think further south of you is grocery store and gas station and-
Yes, they're both at intersections.
Right.
Major- you know, I consider them major intersections. I mean, this is in the middle of residential street.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address Item Number
I'm Irene Thompson, 703 South Cleveland Avenue.
Is it Irene?
Irene Thompson. I live right across the street from 704.
Okay.
And I would really hate to see it go commercial because I don't think we would have any say as to what would go there once it was changed, and I think it would devalue our property. And that's all I can say.
Okay, any questions for Irene? Thank you. Okay, one more. Is there anyone else that would like to address Item Number 13?
My name is Barbara Sandoval, and I live at 2800 East 14th. So, I'm the house that's directly south of the business, and I've probably lived there seven years, and I have children. They're not small, but they are still in the house. And I would have the same concern as Karen Kennedy, that we just don't know what business would be in there, and I'm right in the middle of it. You know, I mean, they're right in the middle of me and the next house. And it's a smaller business. You were talking about the businesses up the street, and they're definitely buildings. The S&amp;S book and the liquor store, but this is a house with a building next to it, and I would just be concerned as to what would be moving in and that we would have no control over that.
Any questions for Barbara?
Thank you.
I guess not. Thank you. Okay. I think it's time for commission action on Item Number 13. For the sake of discussion? We need a motion.
I'm going to die for a lack of a motion.
I don't know if that works here. I think you have to have the motion to approve and then either up or down.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve Item 13, the rezoning.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second for discussion purposes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I share some of the concerns of the neighbors here. A C2 zoning is a- certainly a softer zoning than a C4, but I think once we put that zoning on it, it does open the door to other things that the neighbors won't have control or a say into. I was just looking at permissive uses for C2. One of the things permitted is a motor vehicle service station, gas dispensing station, and I realize the site won't accommodate that at this time. Personal services, I would assume that would be a dry cleaners, hair salon, such like that. It also allows for drive-up service windows devices, and I take us back not too many months ago of the liquor store down on 14th and Cleveland, where there was a lot of animosity or, you know, neighbors were concerned about having drive-up windows to that particular liquor store that certainly had been there for a long- a long time. I think a C2 zoning opens that up, and I don't think that would be fair to this particular neighborhood. I'm not gonna support it for that reason.
Any other discussion regarding item 13?
I agree with you, Ken. If it's a legal, non-conforming use, I don't necessarily see why the rezoning, it can still operate as it is now, and not open it up for a future owner.
Well, I think it also brings into question, Kent, this one-year deal that we talk about all the time. You know, we're certainly not gonna go out and investigate stuff like that, but if there is a change of usage, or if a usage isn't used for a year, I believe the ordinance says it goes back to RD zoning. But-
Any more discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Opposed, same sign.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item number 13 was not approved. Item 14, David, that's yours?
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Item number 14 is petition number 2010-08-01, a major amendment to subareas C and D of the West 57th Street, Number 2, Planned Development District, to allow, to add allowed uses to the PD. The purpose is, the applicant is requesting to add uses related to retail trade, hotels, alcohol, and gas dispensing. The applicant is John Gridley of the Peter Gower Corporation, which should be renoted on your staff report, who is also the owner. The general location is on South Solberg Avenue and West 59th Street, for a total area of about 25.1 acres in size. Abutting land uses and zoning, to the north is Subarea A of the same Planned Development District, which is a multifamily residential land use, which has been assigned a compatibility rating of three. To the south, obviously, is Interstate Right-Away, which is Interstate 229. To the east is the 57th Street West Planned Development District, which is developing office and commercial for compatibility rating of four. And to the west is the Interstate Crossing Planned Development District for compatibility rating of four. When we're considering compatibility ratings, item, compatibility rating of three indicates that the proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing adjacent uses, which may be remedied or minimized through project design. As I noted, Subareas C and D are a total of 25.1 acres in size. Subarea boundaries themselves are not changing just the uses. The West 57th Street, Number 2, Planned Development District was created by City Council Action in April of 1997. Since that time, final development plans for several parcels have been completed in Subareas A and B, while Subareas C and D remain undeveloped. The intent of the Planned Development District was to allow for institutional and office uses. The uses, as noted, the change to the subarea regulations are noted in your staff report by underlined items. Those include a hotel motel, conference facilities as an accessory use to a hotel motel, on-sale alcohol in a full-service restaurant, off-sale alcohol, retail trade and service, and a gas dispensing station. And just to note, as we go through the site description, South Solberg Avenue will be classified as a major collector from West 57th Street to West 69th Street, once the I-229 overpass has been constructed. Street access points will be determined upon submittal of final development plans. And the I-229 design review regulations are in effect for both subareas per the adopted subarea regulations. On our land use and comprehensive plan analysis, the subject's subareas are largely surrounded by office developments with one exception. To the north is a multifamily residential complex that should be taken into consideration when developing final plans and replacement of proposed tenants. Mitigation of impacts such as lighting, traffic, and noise should be considered upon receipt of final plans, and the applicant should take care to ensure that any mitigation that does take place is effective. Solutions to such issues may include berms, landscaping, and building design. The subject properties are in a location that is appropriate for expanding allowed uses to include some commercial development. As stated above, any impacts of specific plans can be mitigated through site design during final develop, during the final development plan process, which will come before this body. As I noted, the Solberg Tallgrass Avenue overpass of I-229 is scheduled to be constructed in 2011. The completion of this corridor is expected to drive additional development in the Golden Triangle area of the city, which this area has been turned, and the applicant anticipates enhanced commercial and hotel development. Because the subject application conforms to the Shaped Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and will not negatively impact surrounding properties with proper mitigation, staff recommends approval of the major amendment. And we have received no calls on this item, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David regarding item 14? I guess not. Thank you, David. Is the petitioner here?
Hello. My name's David Shelton, 1932 South Waltz Avenue for the Peter Gower Corporation. David did an excellent job at explaining what it is that we're looking to do. We see with the Solberg Tallgrass overpass, the completion of 59, the West 59th Street to Louise, and the amount of traffic that that intersection has, along with I-229, that there presents, there's been presented a great opportunity to enhance the area by providing some retail that would be in a larger box form, along the 229, the property that's along 229, that would service the residents and businesses in that area, as well as provide additional, there's an additional need, in doing a needs analysis, for hotel rooms in the city, and particularly in the south quadrant. So there are symbiotic uses, there are uses that are complementary. They enhance property value, and enhance the quality of the Golden Triangle properties combined. And so for that reason, and interest from entities that have not yet entered the marketplace, that we can use to further drive tourism and further complement what the Empire Mall has initiated years ago, that's why we make this application.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would care to address item number 14? Seeing none, is there commission action?
I'd make a motion to approve item number 14.
We have a motion to approve the major amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of item number 14 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 14's been approved. David, item 15.
All right. Item number 15 is petition number 2010-08-07, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a hotel motel on a local street, and to allow off-site parking. The applicant is Cindy Tripp, and with a project name of The Gathering Place. The applicant is requesting approval in order to establish a meeting room and motel facility with off-site parking at 209 South Spring Avenue. The area in question is 0.15 acres in size, and the existing zoning is C2 General Commercial District. To the north, southeast, and west, all lie C2 General Commercial District zoning areas. But to the north is an office use, to the south and to the west are multifamily residential uses, and to the east is a parking lot. The compatibility ratings you'll note are, have been assigned a four for the office use, a three for the multifamily uses, and a four for the parking lot. Your conditional use permit standards that you look at on this application include a hotel motel shall be located in areas where the, where the traffic they generate can be adequately channeled. Designs of these sites should try to minimize the impact of the parking areas necessitated by the use. And then, an accessory parking for off-site, off-site parking should be located within a reasonable distance of the uses it is intended to serve. Natural or man-made barriers and travel safety between sites should be considered. And the parking must be restricted by a written instrument of record. The applicant has provided that instrument that was provided in your staff packets. As I noted, the location is at 209 South Spring Avenue, which is a local street. Direct access to the site is from the rear alley for parking on-street. Parking required are, is nine total spaces. Five are available onsite per the plans drawn up by the applicant, and the applicant has formed an agreement with the property owner to the north to utilize four of their excess parking stalls to meet parking requirements, and that's the office building to the north. We did check to make sure that they had those to give, and they do, as far as their parking, their own parking requirements were considered. The police, as we go through the conditional use plan, the applicant has not indicated that there will be any changes made to the exterior of the site or to the property itself. The police have indicated that security in this area may be a concern, and we did list a condition that I'll read in a little bit on that, and that the applicant should discuss the plans with the Sioux Falls Police Department. The applicant is proposing to convert a single-family residential home into a facility that will allow the rental of an event room to host small events. As an accessory to that facility, four of the bedrooms in the house will be available for overnight guests. Food service will not be provided beyond what can be brought into the site. And your staff report, as I indicated in there, the hotel motel is a conditional use in the C2 General Commercial District when the facility is not located on an arterial street. As I noted, Spring Avenue is classified as a local street, and therefore require, and this application therefore requires the conditional use permit be approved by the Planning Commission. The applicant provided a description of the operation, which was included in this report packet that you were all sent. And as I noted, the applicant is required to have nine parking spaces, five as a base requirement, and then one, one space per available room for overnight guests. The applicant has five spaces located onsite in the rear portion of the lot with access coming from the alley. To meet the rest of the parking requirement, the applicant has secured an agreement with property owner to the north for additional parking. This off-site parking also requires Planning Commission approval as a conditional use permit, and both requests are combined into this application and only need one action from this body. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with following conditions. The first is that no more than eight overnight guests are allowed at one time. Two, install motion detector floodlights in the rear of the property for security. Three, any expansion or alteration of the use will require a revised conditional use permit. And four, approval for this applicant and per the applicant's written description only. And that concludes staff report. We did receive one phone call on this item, and it was more of an inquiries nature. A little bit of concern over security for the site was expressed, but the police department have indicated that they'd like to talk to the applicant about that. So, as I noted, that can clear staff report.
Any questions for David?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
David, the current zoning on that is C2.
That's correct.
And you show us a map here, it's in black and white, it's hard to tell, is that whole block currently zoned C2?
Yes. Yep, yep. And it might be on your screen right now.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Yep.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here?
Hi, my name is Cindy Tripp, and my address is 2001 Pender Lane. I would like to, I think David did a really great job, but if I could, I'd like to take a little of your time and explain to you the business that I have in mind. The home has a nice open area on the main floor, and the idea would be to rent that space out for small events. I feel that it's really hard to find such a place in town to be able to rent out a small place for maybe 20 to 30 people, or even less. They would be in charge of bringing in their own food, or they could cater it in, and there would be a fully equipped kitchen for them. As far as the overnight guests, I would like to promote that for groups, for gals that want to come to Sioux Falls and have a weekend of scrapbooking, or a weekend of quilting or crafting of any kind, or maybe they just want to enjoy our mall, or our Sidewalk Arts Festival, or something like that. If there were to be someone that would like to rent out the event room, and possibly they are from out of town, putting on a anniversary party for their parents, or something like that, or a small family reunion, I would consider, or be, you know, consider renting to them so that their family could stay overnight, keeping it to, of course, eight guests. I did have a family, or, excuse me, a neighborhood meeting. I sent out invitations to all the neighbors within 150 feet, in all directions, from 209 South Spring. I did not have anyone come, although, but we did give them the opportunity.
Anything else, Cindy?
Just if I can answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy?
Mr. Chair, Cindy, it sounds like a heck of an idea. I've been by the site a couple times during the day. Parking is really, really at a premium there. I think I can say this, I parked between two signs that said no parking, just to kind of walk around a little bit. Are you gonna have to take the garage off the back to, as far as remodel, to get your three spots? You have five spots at the law office.
Mm-hmm.
And that's available to you during the day, evenings and weekends?
Right.
Then you're gonna have three spots right behind the building?
We should have hopefully four. We are going, we haven't planned on removing the garage, but we are removing the tree, and bringing the fence in towards the backyard would be shortening the backyard, and that would create more parking and give us the room we need. I've also been in contact, knowing that the parking can be tight, I've been in contact with Mike Drulick of the YMCA, and he is taking it to their board, as if I could lease some parking from them. Also, I have called Gary Joyce of Howell MacDowell, there is a parking lot to the south. And I haven't, he was gonna talk to his partners and get back to me. Unfortunately, I haven't heard back yet from him either, but he sounded positive, but he needed to talk to his other partners. And during the evening, evening and weekend, I think is when there would be the most activity. And I know what you mean by the parking out front, but those cars are not there during the evening. We've gone over there several times in the evening, and I don't know if they're, come from workers in the area or what, but, so yes, we're trying to address that concern.
Well, it sounds like a very novel idea.
Thank you.
I would love to, and thank you so much for having, and trying to have a neighborhood meeting. That's very important.
Pardon me?
Thank you for having a neighborhood meeting.
Sure.
Any other, any other questions for Cindy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item 15? Seeing none, I would call for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, item 15, with the four stipulations.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second item number 15.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item 15 is approved. David, you're up again?
No.
Oh, you're gonna run the computer. Okay. Item 16.
Item 16 is a conditional use permit application for Tammy Johnson daycare. This item, 2010-08-08. Tammy is the applicant, Tammy Johnson, and the owner of the building is Jared Stahl, and Tammy is renting, is a renter, and would like to provide in-home daycare. The conditional use permit is required because she was unable to obtain the required number of petition, or signatures in support of her daycare as required for permitted special use. So we are here for the conditional use. It's located in an RA2 residential district. Existing use is a single-family residence. She has provided us with a site plan, a copy of her health department registration, and a schedule indicating the number of children that would be onsite at any one time. As a single-family residence, it has a compatibility rating of- As a single-family residence, it has a compatibility rating of five in the neighborhood. That is, it is compatible as a residential use. The applicant is proposing to provide daycare services on the subject property for up to eight children between the hours of 5:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. The requirements that the owner, renter, occupy the house is taken care of, we've been provided hours of operation, it is, we do have a copy of the health department registration, and they have provided a site plan indicating the play areas and a safe driveway area for children drop off and pickup. The conditional use permit requirement for your consideration is that a safe, healthy environment for the person is primary importance, and the applicants have met the conditions of their submittal requirements, and that they be located in an area where adequate safe, and adequate and safe playground and sufficient green area can be provided where safe access to the use is available, and in an area where such use will be convenient for their clients. Currently, the property is located four blocks west of South Minnesota Avenue and four blocks south of West 12th Street, primary arterial streets, but close enough for access to their clients conveniently located. It is also conveniently located and centrally located to a residential neighborhood for their use as well. It is located in the urban core of the city, it's directly accessible from West 15th Street for pickup and drop off, the back door of the residence. Parking is off-street, parking is provided at the rear of the house with a driveway out to West 15th Street, and landscaping is shown as existing. Proposed daycare is in an area where safe access is possible from major collector streets, and it's convenient for walking from the surrounding neighborhood. The playground could be made more adequate and safe with sufficient green area if it could be provided that the applicant gather all outdoor play equipment into one area and fence it. At the time, photographs were provided to the planning department indicated play equipment scattered on either side of the house. Staff is recommending approval because it does meet the requirements of the submittal with one condition, that it provide a single outdoor play area fenced for safety and containing all outdoor play equipment. Staff has not received any calls, but is aware that there are neighborhood concerns, and I believe there are representatives of the neighborhood here this evening, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, the permitted special use that you said the applicant was not able to achieve, what are the requirements of that?
Okay, for permitted special uses in the residential district, there are four requirements. The first one is that it have, that it provide the city health department's daycare registration, which was provided. The second one is that there is written documentation that the owner, renter occupies the house, and that was provided, along with the hours of operation. The third one is the petition of support signed by seventy-five percent of registered property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. They were not able to provide that, and therefore they need to have the conditional use.
On that last point, is that a apartment building kitty corner from across Prairie Avenue?
I believe it is, yes.
And in that case, if that's within the radius, do you have to get all the people, or just the owner?
Just the owner of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Hello, Tammy Johnson, 701 South Prairie Avenue. Just here to get a zoning permit. I've been doing daycare there for four years. I am city certified and state registered, so I have some people here to back me up.
Okay. Any questions for Tammy? Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would care to address item sixteen?
Good evening, Jared Stoll, 6109 South Grand Prairie Drive. I'm the owner of the property. I just wanted to say that we are going to, we've been taking bids for a fence, to get a fence put in to meet that requirement.
Any questions for Jared? Is it? Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would care to address item number sixteen?
Hello, my name is Melissa Crossley, and I have two children that have attended Tammy's daycare for about three and a half years. I called the 211 helpline for registered and licensed daycare, and Tammy was on the list. And I put my children in open enrollment at Lowell Elementary, I'm Cherry Redland School District, but my children had to walk down Sixth Street and across Cliff, and it's nice because Lowell Elementary is on Eighteenth and Prairie, and Tammy's on Fifteenth and Prairie, so the children are within two blocks of the school system, so they're in a school zone. And I know there's other children that go to Head Start and stuff, and the bus picks them up and drops them off there. It's not just a daycare for my children, it's a safe, secure environment, it's been very stable. As a single mother, I do work till 6:30, so it's hard to find, like, big daycare centers that, most of them close at six o'clock, so Tammy's willing to work with me to watch my children. As far as the fenced area, she does have two different play areas which give the children, you know, room to play around and move, but they're always supervised, and I believe without a fence, they learn their boundaries, because I'm a homeowner myself, and I have two children, the neighbor have two children on each side of me, and we don't have fenced yards, we just make sure they're monitored, and that's where the children learn their boundaries. I think some of the issues that are being brought up too is with the fencing, is that there's neighbors' concerns about the look and the appearance of the home, but it's not what it looks like, it's what's given in the home, and it's love that's given there by Tammy, and her teenage children also were there, so there's a wide range of children from two to eighteen. So, I'm in support of Tammy's daycare center.
Any questions for Melissa? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address item sixteen?
My name is Harley Thompson, I live at 705 South Prairie. I live right next door to Tammy's home. My concern is with the property itself. In the past, I have no problem with Tammy having a daycare, it's the way the daycare is operated. Everything was in the front yard, and the front yard is probably fifteen feet from the sidewalk to the front of the porch. And if you see where the trampoline is there, that is where the daycare was. And it just, it was unorganized. When you come down the street from the south, it looked like that was my yard. I put up a privacy fence, cedar privacy fence, along the north side of my property, starting at six foot, down to five foot, down to four foot to the sidewalk, so people would know where my property ended. I would like to see if Tammy's gonna get this permit, to have the north side of her house, where the big yard is, the main yard is on the north side of her house. And I feel that that should be fenced, that's right, right there. I feel that that should be fenced in, across the street, the house on the corner, across the street, has a privacy fence with my son, and I put up for the people that owned the house at the time, and we used cedar, dog-eared cedar, and it really looks nice, that backyard really looks nice. I would like to see, rather than a chain link fence, I would like to see something similar to that fence on the property across the street. I have a privacy fence around my house. I think that would add to the curb appeal of the property, and it would just make it a lot nicer looking area. What I am concerned about is the way it looks. I've lived, my wife and I have lived in that house for forty-four years, and my neighbors have, they're all thirty-plus years, there's four or five of us, and we're old timers in that neighborhood. We want our, that house has been a blight in that neighborhood for forty years. It's a rental property, it was originally from a family that lived in New York, and that house has never, ever been maintained. The people buy it, rent it out, and that's it. And it's a disaster, and I want it cleaned up. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Harley?
Mr. Chair?
Kenny.
Harley, you don't have a problem with a daycare there?
No, absolutely not. Tammy, I've always gotten along with Tammy, I'll do anything for Tammy, and she knows that. But she has to have help getting her daycare set up, lot-wise.
You feel that it would enhance the neighborhood, or be a lot better if the fence that we're requiring be a solid fence versus a?
I would like to see that. That would add, and then they're scraping the house now, and I believe Jared's gonna paint the house, and with that four-foot cedar fence, I think that would really set, that would really add to the curb appeal of that house with a paint job and some other improvements. I think, I have no problem with that, but I do have a problem with chain link.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Harley. Okay, is, we'll take one more.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Steve a question real quick in regards to the fence? I don't wanna get in the designing of the fence here, but because it's a corner lot, there's, there's two front yards, correct?
That's correct.
So, there's gonna be some issues as far as front yard setback, and fence height, and so on, isn't there?
Uh, no, a four-foot fence would be allowed at the property line.
To the property line, that the four-foot would be, but not a six-foot?
Not a six-foot.
And can it be a cedar fence, versus, it doesn't matter if it's cedar or chain link?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, can you draw a line where the stipulation is, where the fence should be?
Uh, the stipulation in the staff report did not specify the location, it just said one area for, to contain the play equipment that show, is shown on their plan and being around the house in different areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, one more person.
Hi, my name is Kim Waterman, 3601 Southwest Avenue.
What's her name again?
Kim Waterman. I too am a parent whose child goes to that daycare. The issue here tonight has been about the fence, and that was what we were brought here for. To me, I don't think it should matter what type of fence, as long as if that's what they're willing to do to make it work. This is my fourth daycare, my child is only three years old, this is my fourth daycare, and the daycare itself, which I know is not the issue, but is a great daycare. Tammy does everything she can, not only for the kids, but for the rest of us that are single parents. She does do what she can to take care of the neighbors' needs or concerns, or if she, you know, she's, her door is open to everybody. The one thing that I agree with about the fence, part goes, is being able to come down the street and see my child out there being taken care of, knowing that he is safe before I even get there, I guess to me, that lets, that's just, it doesn't matter what kind of fence it is, just to know that Tammy is doing what she's supposed to be doing with her residents, as well as her job.
Any other questions for Kim? Thank you. Okay, one more over there, and then we'll close testimony.
My name is Dottie Ash, and I live in at 718 South Prairie.
Is it Dottie?
Dottie.
Dottie? Okay, Dottie.
And it is important to us homeowners in that neighborhood, what that property looks like. Curb appeal is very important, and we would like to see all that stuff that she has out there, the child equipment, the trampoline, et cetera, enclosed in one area, where no one else coming down the street sees that visual right away. And also, I have firsthand information that there's a possibility, there's a renter at 721 South Prairie, that has expressed the possibility of a daycare there. And I think a daycare two houses down to the south from the one that's being proposed is excessive in the neighborhood.
Well, we can't deal with something that's not before us tonight, and so that other daycare would have to go through the same process.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any questions for Dottie? Thank you. Okay, commission action relative to item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve item number sixteen for a, excuse me, with the one stipulation to provide a single outdoor play area fence for safety.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jesse, do you feel it'd be unreasonable to have a solid fence?
Kenny, I don't, no, I don't think it would be unreasonable to have a solid fence, but I also think that it's not a requirement either. And I, I think Jared needs to do everything he can to keep the neighbors in that neighborhood happy. I think, it sounds to me like Tammy's running a great daycare, which is a really significant benefit in our city, as we do have so many women in the workforce and families in the workforce, and daycares are always difficult, but it comes before this commission on a regular basis. So, does it fit the land use? There's no doubt about that. Do I think the landlord needs to do everything he can to make the neighbors in that neighborhood happy? Yes, I do, but personally, I don't know if we need to say that it needs to be solid. I would hope that that would be the decision he makes, whether it's cedar, whether it's white, I would hope it wouldn't be chain link, because I don't think it's that much of a stretch to, to keep his neighbors happy, who've been longtime residents there as well, and to keep Tammy happy, who, who obviously intends to be there for a while as well.
Jesse, with a conditional use permit, this is our opportunity to kind of, I think what I'm hearing from the neighborhood is no, not opposition to a daycare, I think, I think their concern is the street appeal, you know, as far as the neighborhood and the neighbors are concerned, I, I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'm not sure how to do this, I'd like to make an amendment to the stipulation, but...
You can suggest that the motion be amended, but that would be up to Jesse to decide if she wanted to do that.
I would make a suggestion, Jess, Jesse, to amend the, to amend the motion. I would like it to re, if I may, if I could say, I'd like it to stipulate a solid fence.
I'm not opposed to amending my motion, I can do that.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, I'd like to amend my motion for approval of item number sixteen with one stipulation, and to add the language that it would be a, what'd you say, solid fence, Kenny?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what the material need be of...
Something other than chain link?
Something other than chain link.
Okay, a solid fence, other than chain link.
Kent, are you okay with the amendment? Or, Steve?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding item sixteen? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the conditional use... Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the conditional use permit, item number sixteen, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. The motion is approved. Item seventeen, Steve?
Item seventeen is a conditional use permit for Burma Motor Home Park. The purpose of this application is for a campground. It's a two-and-a-half acre site, currently zoned effectively by the city council as C4 Planned Commercial District and existing use as a light commercial storage. We've been provided with site plans and a typical lot development plan, and in the area, we have a general compatibility rating of four because of the relationship between the subject property, C4, and the adjacent properties, which are I-1 light industrial. The compatibility rating of four indicates a minor conflict potential, and so we want to be careful in the approval of the conditional use permit that the impacts of traffic or other impacts, building elements and scales and so on, be compatible with surrounding an existing and proposed development. The applicant is proposing to locate sixteen RV campground lots on the subject property. The plan that you have in front of you indicates the location of those lots to the rear of an existing building development north of some existing storage units and closer to the interstate ramp, but also relatively close to a residential use to the north. Setbacks and dimensions are indicated for the RV lots in the existing site development plan with required side yards, required parking, required pad locations. Landscaping indicates existing trees to be preserved, which are scattered throughout the site. There's no signage plan indicated, no lighting plan indicated, and trash is not indicated. The general requirements for conditional use campground is that they conform to the South Dakota Department of Health requirements for campgrounds and that the campgrounds for camping units within the urbanized area of the city be sited with consideration for vehicular access, also to design to minimize the impact from adjacent major streets and highways. There are a list of criteria there that deal with the size of the site, water supply, sewage disposal facilities, conforming to code requirements, electrical, conforming to code requirements, LP tanks being a certain size, yard depths, and access to public roads and highways. The plan as prepared by an engineering consultant conforms to those requirements. We do not have evidence that it conforms to the state health department requirements, although that will have to be done before they can get a license as a campground. The fire department has indicated that a fire lane be provided with all portions of campground area within six hundred feet of a hydrant, and that will also have to be provided. A utility plan is required showing how domestic water service and fire suppression service systems be extended or constructed to the campsites. That also has to be approved by engineering prior to any water utilities being extended or constructed. And finally, drainage improvements will be required for the site. Site runoff may not negatively impact adjacent landowners. An onsite detention may be required based on the amount of new impervious area. So a campground is a conditional use in the C4 district. The proposed campground is generally compatible with the other uses in the area. There's a variety of uses in this light industrial area, and the use would add to traffic on north of the Luise Circle, but only because it is a cul-de-sac. Any use or increased use in the area would add to the traffic. Building elements and scale are consistent with the surrounding adjacent development. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. We did have a neighbor stop in the office today to express concern about the security of the site, and they are here this evening to express those concerns. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kenny.
Steve, I'm, and I'm just trying to get this right in my mind, the location, did we not approve a, isn't there a towing company that moved up into this general vicinity for storage of cars?
Uh, that's correct. It's in the, it's to the south, I believe.
Okay.
South of the proposed property.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here this evening?
My name's Doug Berklin with Sire Associates. We're helping the petitioner, Jim Burma, senior, with the development, and he asked that I be able to stand up and address any concerns that you folks might have.
Any questions for Doug? I guess not. Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would care to address item number seventeen?
Uh, yes. My name is Jim Burma, senior, and I'm the owner of the property that we're talking about with this campground. Now, I have some pictures here that they assured me that they could put up on the In keeping with Sioux Falls, we have a sculpture there, and it's a buffalo. Now, the buffalo is important because as you come off of the interstate, you go around the circle, and you turn by the rolling pin, and you go straight ahead till you see the buffalo, then you turn right and the next left to get in to a secured gate. And it's geared gate looks like that, and it has a keypad entry into it that we give to all of the people that rent storage units from us currently. Now, the storage units that we have, uh, this is the north side of four buildings that go along, and you can see the fire hydrant that's there that has brought in to this property, and nowhere do we get more than six hundred feet from this fire hydrant, so we can take care of, of them. And this is the, the south side of the property, and we have a fence, and that fence is seven feet high, so people can't see into it. The next picture, you know, it's, you come into the gates, you come around that big tree, and then you go to the right-hand side of this tree, and we have one neighbor to the north, which is the Soward family, and they own the property back there, and we worked with them in giving them some property, or selling them some property, so they could, we could put the fence up and it wouldn't bother them. Then the last picture I have is a picture, I don't know where those dollar bills got in there, but, but it's an entrance to the back of this property where there's approximately, the whole piece is an eight or nine acre piece of property, and that goes back to another area that's not being developed at this time, and we'll see what goes first, whether it's the campground or the storage units and/or the campground. Now, we also have established some rules for the campground. First of all, we're only interested in campers for people who live, who have sold their home in Sioux Falls, and they go to warm weather in the fall, and we're going to work out an arrangement where, you know, they pay X for the months that they're here, and then they pay a nominal sum to keep their same campsite. There is no overnight camping, and the campground is really a living place. There's enough room between campers to meet all the requirements of zoning. There's enough room for them to park their cars that they have. A lot of people have boats and stuff like that. There's enough room in the camp dimension. Why don't you put that, the drum, if you had, up, yeah, right there. There's enough room for them to do that on this side, which would be at the bottom of where the campers, they would back in. On the other side, they could drive in and then drive out to go dump their camper and stuff, even though we're going to have sewer and water to all of the campers that we have. Plus, we have that area up in front there with the triangle that, on the top of the screen, where we could put playground equipment or something like that, so when their grandkids come over to see them, they can enjoy themselves. So that is the plan, and we don't have all the rules developed yet, but we're working on those as to what we should allow and what we shouldn't allow, but our focus is long-term or longer term than overnight camping.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any questions for Jim?
Mr. Burma, I, I'm sorry.
Kenny?
Jim, it, it sounds like you've got this pretty well thought out, pretty well planned.
Yeah, I've had a lot of help from the planning commission and the engineering people and from Sire and Associates.
And you've got enough ground here, depending on how this goes, you might...
Might add more, but then we would address that as we come along. Maybe we need more storage, and there's a definite shelter belt that goes there, and then if you go, you see the shelter belt?
Yep.
And then go back to the other picture, right there, the, you see the four buildings, and that area to the left-hand side of the fourth building is asphalt, and there we park campers and boats and stuff that don't need to be inside. Now, they brought up some good points that I hadn't thought through, would, is the garbage and stuff like that, but we always have a dumpster on site where we could take care of garbage, but that issue needs to be developed a little bit more and, and taking care of, because you gotta have a place for them to dump their garbage.
Right.
And I have no problems with that at all.
Jim, we have, we have one other question. Jesse?
I just want to clarify, you said no overnight camping. You mean no single overnight. You want long-term?
Right.
So if somebody can't go camp there for two days?
No.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Because we're, we're not set up for that, and we don't want the things that go along with overnight camping on the way to Sturgis or whatever, and parties that would disrupt the neighborhood, and I don't want them to disrupt the other people.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address item number seventeen?
Yeah, my name is Mike Soward, and we have the property directed to the north at twenty-two oh one North Luise, and just a couple of things that we're concerned about, and ultimately, you guys are going to make the decision whether it flies or not, but not too long ago, we had a police issue where they were out checking doors, but the security gate in the front closes when they're gone, and the question that we have is the people coming and going from their storage units versus the people that are coming and going to a campground. And fire issue is the same thing. It's gated, you know, if there's a fire, you know, how are they going to get through the gate? That's, that's one issue. Security, I don't know that it's going to be a big issue, but it's a little bit of an issue. Pets, noises, after hours, I don't know that there's going to be anybody around to police the campground, because our, our house is approximately a hundred and forty feet from the closest campsite, which is, has four, or five apartments in it, and, but like I said, I'm not opposed to it. I just, if, if it does happen, I want some clarification on who's going to be in charge, and if we have issues, you know, parties, whatever, and I know what Jim's intentions are, but sometimes that doesn't always come true, and so I guess that's our concerns, and you guys can ask any questions right here.
Any questions for Mike? I guess not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mike, I'm just wondering, did any of your concerns get answered tonight through staff's presentation or Jim's presentation, or those are still issues in your mind?
There's still some issues. Like I say, there, we've had a, and I just talked to Jim earlier, but we had an issue just in the last month where there's, in the storage unit area, there's this guy with race cars starting and running in the storage unit area, and like I say, our property is from where they were doing it, and maybe Jim doesn't even know it's there, but the problem that they have is they've got sixty units, and a lot of this stuff goes on after six o'clock, and nobody's around, just to be honest with you. So to have campers back there concerns me a little bit, and I, and I know he's looking at the, the, a better camping-type person, but as far as long-term goes, but I guess there still could be issues, and I, and I guess if, if, if we can get, like I say, I'm not opposed to it, I just want there to be some regulation and, and if, if we've got issues, if there's problems, who do we need to call to address? Because like I say, the, the police were there for at least, one was there for a half hour, the other guy stayed for about forty-five minutes to an hour because a garage door got left open, and they couldn't get through the gate. So the, one of the questions I have is, how does the, if there's a fire or anything, how does, how do they issue that secured gate? I guess that's my concern.
That's a good question. I, I don't know.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address item seventeen? Jim, you can stay there if you'd like. Do you have any answers to the questions that Mike just raised?
Uh, I've raised some good points. Number one, the race car issue. The race car issue, I know that there's one or two people that have race cars. I did not know that they were testing out their race cars on, on the asphalt that we have on the south side... on the south side of the fence, and that should not be allowed. The police department access, I think that's just a matter of giving them the code to get in there, and that's done, you know. And the fire department access, you know, you can have a lockbox that they can get into that would have a garage door opener in it that would open the gate if that was the only way you could do it, and you couldn't give them the code because they couldn't put it in a place where they would have access to it. You know, and I do have a person living on site in that house that's there that theoretically is supposed to be a manager or an on-site person that can address these issues. Now, I got called about one o'clock in the morning when the police were there, and they'd walked around the gate. Now, the door that was left open was the door facing the east on the big building that we have, and I was the one that left the door open. And I was glad that they called. And so, then I called this gal that's worked for me since nineteen seventy-four, on and off, different times, and said, you gotta go out there. And, you know, she was reluctant, you know, well, what's going on? What's there? Well, I said, there's a bunch of policemen there, and you need, so you're going to be protected. You don't have to have an issue. So, then she drove her car over there and, you know, and she said, well, they were sweeping the building, and I was glad that they took the time to sweep the building when nobody was there. But there's some stuff we need to address that we haven't put in the rules, and Mike has brought up some excellent points. His mother lives in that house. In addition to, they rent some apartments out in the house where she lives, and we definitely want to have these issues taken care of, and that will be incorporated into the rules that we set for this campground. We probably won't get any campers till next spring, when they're coming back.
So, Jim, you'll work with Mike and keep him informed of the rules as they evolve, and make sure he's got somebody that he can contact?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I hate to ask if there's anybody else. Okay, one short, one short testimony here.
I'll make a short. I'm Mrs. Soward, let's, north of Jim Burma's. And in regards to those race cars, I guess during the daytime, you can put up with revving the engines up. But the other day, I came down the street, and there was a pickup pushing a race car out of the gate, and they pushed it down the street. And Jim isn't around. He doesn't have a clue what's going on at that place. And the same way with his person that he has living in the house. She isn't there all the time, and quite frankly, I don't know that if there was a bunch of hell racing going on that I'd go out there.
He knows now.
Huh?
He knows now.
Well, I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Commission action regarding item number seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seventeen for a campground.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. I believe that items eighteen and nineteen are a part of our amendment package. Brent, is that true?
It is true. Both items were given as an addendum yesterday. For the record, I am Brent O'Neil with the city staff on this item, and if I could address both items eighteen and nineteen together as they are related. This item is the creation of a tax increment financing district, and I'm going to go through a little bit about this, but this is related to the CNA project that was announced about a month ago, a month and a half ago. And this first slide here just kind of gives you a conceptual of what that building would be. I'm going to give an overview real quickly of what the building site entails. It is at the site of the former Shoneman's Lumber Yard at 305 East A Street. The property owner here would be Lumber Exchange LLC. The developer is Lloyd Companies, and perspective is the architect. It is a Class A office space, quite a large building at over one hundred and thirty thousand square feet. They're going to have five hundred parking spaces on site. I mentioned here two hundred and fifty in a parking structure, and I'll come back to that in a minute. They're going to start very soon with a May completion date. This slide is meant to be just a little bit of a refresher on tax increment financing. Within tax increment financing, there's a current tax that's paid, and that base is frozen. A new project will generate additional revenue, and that increment of new revenue created by the increased project can go for eligible project expenses. There is a twenty-year maximum life of a TIF district, and then after repayment, all taxing entities, that being the county, city, or school district, would receive their share of the increment. State law requires the planning commission to set the boundaries in the project plan and recommend their approval to the planning, excuse me, the city council. So, items eighteen and nineteen are basically that, setting the boundary and setting the project plan for recommendation. First, I'd like to address the project boundary. Again, this is simply a portion of the old Shoneman Lumber site. It includes that site as well as portions of the River Greenway, future River Greenway, and then the adjacent railroad right-of-way next to it that is abandoned. Within TIF District Ten, we have a estimated current taxable value of about one million dollars. That amounts to about seventeen thousand in annual property taxes. With this project going forward, we estimate that at the completion of the project, the taxable value will have increased by twenty point five million, which will generate about four hundred thousand in new taxes at that site, and four hundred thousand will be the increment that we're working with here. We've got four or five real broad categories of identified eligible expenses totaling eight point five million. The biggest one, and I mentioned the parking earlier, is the biggest one would go to fund the parking structure that's going to be on site for two hundred and fifty stalls. There's also a River Greenway component of one million dollars, some of the fees associated with the project, as well as a land assembly and other legal and professional advice on this project. The last point there is the plan as written allows a maximum TIF indebtedness of four point seven five million. And that, on the next side, really is the project need, the gap that can be filled through using tax increment financing in this project. One point in the middle there is that in this TIF district, all the expenses and the project eligible items going forward with the TIF are going to be financed by the developer. Typically, they're financed through TIF bonds issued by the city, but in this case, it'll be done through the developer. And let's see, one more, Steve. Kind of to wrap it up, this property is properly zoned at, I think